Our clerk will be a little late this evening and our treasurer will be a little late this evening. Both are expected, but in the absence of our clerk-
I move to appoint myself for the clerk temporarily.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Smith to appoint trustee Bills as the temporary clerk until our clerk arrives. Any discussion? Other nominations? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Would you please do a roll call of the board?
Uh, trustee Thering?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Uh, supervisor Milky?
Here.
Bills, yes. All here, except Cody is gonna be late.
Same with treasurer Rice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rice is gonna be later or she's gonna be?
Uh, both can be a little bit late.
Okay.
What I was told.
They're both excused to be late.
We have a fairly light agenda tonight, um, being just two items. Happy to entertain motions on the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Smith, I heard. Thering? Give it to Thering.
Okay.
Uh, to approve the agenda, any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Did everybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I was pretty sure maybe you didn't hear me.
I didn't. Motion passes unanimously. We did have, not have any, uh, abstentions. Jennifer? This would be an opportunity, if you were planning a presentation, I wasn't told that you would. I'm assuming you're just here for questions, is that accurate? So you don't want the opportunity to get up at this point?
I don't need to unless you guys want me to.
We're all set.
I'm just checking.
Thank you.
Uh, so no presentations, we have no public hearings, so we'll open public comment at 7:02 PM. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. Public comment is restricted to items on this agenda. Seeing no one coming forward, no, no, I'm getting notice that no one is connected remotely, correct? So with that, uh, we will close public comment at 7:03 PM. That takes us to report boards and comments, uh, current list of boards and commissions. Uh, we still have the planning commission opening and I believe an alternate on the ZBA. Board member reports. Trustee Brown?
I don't have a report today.
Nope.
Uh, at the work session for the county board of commissioners, uh, the one portion, Chair, Chairman Hope went over outlining the budgetary numbers for the millage and what it includes and what it does not include and what the general fund includes and what it does not include as far as public safety. It was probably about a three, four minute presentation. Uh, I think they're gonna have a link on the website to kind of show that for people that are interested in it, so it was, shows a spreadsheet. And it's very, uh, descriptive on where the money's actually going and what it can and can't pay for, which, so I thought it was very nicely done.
What was the date of that meeting?
Uh, that would've been on September 3rd. It would've been at the work session portion and not the regular meeting at seven, so the work session was discussed. Uh, MSU Extension had a presentation, their annual presentation on what they've done in the county over the last year. They did set the public hearing for later that night at seven o'clock. Uh, they do have a balanced budget. And, so that was about it of the major things at the county meeting.
So the budget you described, I'm assuming is largely high level, department level kind of stuff?
Yes, what they do a presentation on that, since there's so many different funds and everything like that, it just would be very cumbersome to put it all on, so they do the high level departmental and everything is balanced.
Nice.
Yeah, so they, uh, a lot of hard work went into that for the balanced budget.
Yeah, kudos to them.
Yes.
I think that budget's posted on their website, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
There were some last minute discussions on some of it, but ultimately they just decided to do away with most of it most of the additional discussions and just went with the original.
And they've not voted that through yet at this point?
No, they were just holding a public hearing.
Right.
Yeah, the vote will be on the next, on the 17th.
Okay, awesome.
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Uh, we do not meet till next Tuesday, so hopefully at our next meeting I'll have something to say, or Mr. Nanny will actually, in a better way.
So you have a, a new member, was he at the last meeting then?
No, no, he'll be at this meeting. And we do have, we currently have a, another opening for anyone who may be interested in the Union Township Planning Commission.
And I don't have anything to report at this point. Uh, actually I do. I missed one on the current list of boards and commissions. Brian Nyer, who's been the chair for some time for the Board of Review, has vacated the township. Sold his house, still running his farm, but he doesn't live there anymore, so he had to step down from the Board of Review, so that's a new opening as well. And I just want to thank him for his service. Um, I think I've been on the Board of Review for almost four years with him and been a good chair, so.
So, so does that mean we have?
Two right now.
We have, or, is it?
We have two people on there, we need three.
Right. The third, the alternate is still, let's write till December.
Yep. Yeah, December's their next meeting. It's a fairly, um, light meeting, it's just kind of organizational. But it would be nice to have that seat filled by then. Moving on? Consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Smith. Uh, who had warrants?
I had warrants tonight and everything was good.
Awesome. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business. Discussion on the water main extension bid. Director Smith, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. In your packet, it's starting on page 20, there's a request for board action for the approval of a bid from McGurk Sand and Gravel for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, ARPA Grant Division B Water Main Transmission and Extinctions Project in the amount of $3,857,325, and authorize the township manager to sign the contract. Um, in the request for board action, it goes through, um, some of the steps we've taken on this. As you know from reading it, we came in quite a bit over budget. So, um, the, the project was bid, sealed bids, and we received two bids, one from McGurk Sand and Gravel and the other from another local contractor. They were, the project was bid in two ways. We bid it to find out about cost and what would be the most cost effective way. We did a base bid, which was to open cut, and then we did a, um, an alternate, which was to directional drill. And the base bid did come in lower, so that is the one we're recommending tonight. The, um, the scope of this is the installation of 16 inch water main from where we're drilling our new well, over to the Isabella Treatment Plant. And then, as well as, um, and then there's some 12 inch and 8 inch in there, because when you come onto our property, the size changes and then so it's a combination of 16, 12, and 8 inch water main that will go in as this part of the project. And then, um, the other pro, the other portion of this project is the Pickard-Sumerton Broadway loop. Um, this will connect at the corner of Pickard and Sumerton, go south to Venture Way, and then go further down to Broadway, so that it actually tie in two places. And, um, it's the installation of the water main as well as the looping part of it. So the original budget for this project was, um, $2,621. And, as you can see, the bids came in rather high, higher than we anticipated, $3,857. So after the bid opening, we sat down, um, Jennifer, myself, Jennifer from Gordy Frazier, who is here tonight if you have any questions for, uh, myself and Sean McBride, Chief Water Operator, and went through the bids. And looked for possible savings. For example, one was the, when the bid, when the project was designed and bid, we had some open questions still to Eagle. One of those was, did the wells need to be brought in separately, or could they be combined? And we then found out they could be combined, so that allowed us to take some of that water main out of this project, so some of the savings is that. Another portion was, um, when this was bid, there's always a little bit of a contingency with extra pipe, so um, Gordy Frazier went through and, um, tightened those numbers up, so some of those savings is some extra pipe that we know that's not actually gonna get put in, because they pay by the foot with the pipe. And then, um, just some various other things, the change in from a directional drill to, um, or from a bore and jack to a directional drill would save us some money. So, we've looked through and we found $320,000 that we could save and some of these items that would, um, help to get us closer to budget. After we did that, we still had a deficit of 900, you know, over $900,000, so we then discussed what do we do at this point, 'cause we have a certain amount in the grant, we can't go over that amount. So we talked about what we would do. Some of our options were, um, to eliminate Sumerton Road, the Sumerton Road project. That's about a million dollars. That would put us back in budget on the water main. None of us wanted to do that, because we think that's an important project. It's been in the plan for many years, both the townships, public services, as well as the, um, East DDA. So we, we didn't really want to do that. It will help with fire protection in that area, redundancy and capacity for if we have businesses come into the industrial park or some prop, you know, some still land that's vacant over in that area. So, once we discussed that and decided, well, we would, we'd rather not take that out, then we talked about other possible funding sources, so we could stay on track with our, um, grant money. And what we are recommending tonight is that we will go to the DDA, East DDA specifically, or the EDA next week. And this is a timing thing, this meeting was before theirs, that's why you're seeing it before we have the opportunity to ask the East DDA if they would participate. Um, we'll go to them and ask them for $500,000 to support this. They do have this in their project plan and in the past, they have been very supportive of township infrastructure projects. The other portion would come from the water fund, that would be about $420,000. And, um, also provided in your packet tonight was a summary of where that fund is at, so that you, uh, you know that there is funding there for this project, if you choose, if we choose to move forward with it. Now, one, one hurdle could be if the East DDA decides, or the EDA decides to not support with the $500,000, then the entire amount would come from the water fund if we want to move forward with the project. So we are recommending tonight that we move forward with the project. We think it's an important project, it's good for the township, it's good for that area. And, um, it's good for development in the East DDA. That we asked the EDA for $500,000. If they approve that, then the water fund would put in, the water general fund would put in 420. If they do not approve it, then we would be putting in the entire $920,000 that's needed to, to fill that gap.
So the motion we do tonight would be worst case scenario of the 920, in case the EDA board, okay. So you don't have to come back to us for?
No, I wouldn't have to. What we're, what you're approving is their, their entire bid.
Okay.
And then how, how we would reduce those items is, would change orders.
Okay.
As the project progresses, you know, we'll change those items and then they'll be done and change orders, so it will decrease the price. And just so you are aware, we are, there are some other possible ways we could save some funds. Um, after the project was bid, we found out that there's a drain in an area that we didn't know about, that we can put some water main in, that should, should be a cost savings. But as we're doing the project, as we always do, we will look for other cost savings and worked with the contractor on that too. So, we will be looking for other ways to help try to reduce that $920,000 deficit that we have on this project.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. One more thing, if you do approve it tonight, sorry. You, you'll see this, if you approve it, the 420 you'll see as a budget request for next year. 'Cause the, um, transmission main is going to be done first, because the transmission main, the plant expansion, as well as the well, are dependent on the transmission main. So that portion of the project will go in first, then Sumerton Road. So Sumerton Road, we don't expect to start until next year.
Okay.
So that's why we're gonna put it in as a budget request. If it ends up being that the DDA, East D, EDA, I still do that over the years, does not approve to support the project, then you'll see that request at the full amount. So that's how we're gonna handle that versus a budget adjustment this year.
I think that's totally feasible.
Put a lot of work into it.
Yeah.
We did, we spent a lot of time, Jennifer from Gordy Frazier and Sean were, you know, everybody sat down and just looked at things and, um, tried to come up with as much as we could, and that's what we'll continue to do.
I'll make a motion. Motion for approval of the base bid from McGurk Sand and Gravel Incorporated for the Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, ARPA Grant Division B Water Main Transmission and Extension Project in the amount of $3,857,325, and authorize the township manager to sign the contract.
Support? Motion by Brown, support by Smith. I'll, I'll just comment on the EDA. Obviously, I, I can't speak for what they may or may not decide. Other than past history, they've shown a lot of support for that area with that industrial park that's there. Both water and sewer that's been put in our past. As Director Smith indicated, um, this is on their plan already. So this won't be a surprise when it comes to them, other than maybe the timing of it, I suppose.
Right.
Yeah. So we'll see where that goes, but I, I would be surprised if there wasn't general support for it, but you never know.
Right. Just one final comment, just we're, uh, township's lucky to have staff to have such good financial controls over this, to that we have money saved where we can dip into it for situations like this. I think the township's very fortunate and I commend you and the staff for their hard work on that.
Uh, I, I second Brian. Trustee Smith?
And I just had a question, too. Why did things go up so much? Is it just material costs or what?
It's material and labor. We were surprised it was that high as well. I mean, we, we built in some contingencies. We talked about how much, um, you know, we should estimate for these things. Jennifer used jobs that had been recently bid when the project plan was done. That's the other piece of it. The, um, you know, the project plan is done and then it takes a whole another year before you hear if you got money, and then you have to wait for your contracts and then you bid. So there's quite a time span in there. And, um, I think it's just the bidding climate, there's a lot of these projects, especially underground work, out on the street right now. So contractors that are doing this kind of work have a little bit of luxury to, um, bid what they want and bid how they want, more so than maybe in, at other times, because all of these projects have similar deadlines.
Yeah.
We, uh, for those that just arrived, we have a motion regarding the first business item to approve the base bid from McGurk Sand and Gravel. I don't know if you wanna recap some of this? You missed the introduction, so I, if you've read it in your packet, you got a good-
I'm good with it.
I, I think maybe just to highlight it, um, is if we pass the motion, we're approving the entire amount with the idea, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, anybody, uh, we're approving the entire amount with the hope or the ask for the EDA to partner in this for a half million dollars. Four hundred and twenty thousand of that would then come out of the water fund. If that doesn't happen, uh, all will be coming out of the water fund. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And we do have these, sorry, I'll just, we do have these projects separated, 'cause I know that we have to be careful about not expending EDA funds in other, it needs to be done in that corridor, so that exercise has already been done, the wa, you know, we'll be able to separate these costs, so that we're sure that we're not, we're not spending funds that we're not supposed to.
So the, the cut on US 127, where is that supposed to be?
Um, so I don't know how to explain it, 'cause there's really no markers, but maybe Jennifer can-
Well, it, it, it's the southbound lane. So on the side, um, well basically parallel to the railroad tracks, I guess is the best way to-
Oh.
Yeah, where it's more clear. The other side, the northbound, was predominantly a lot of wetland and a lot of brush. And so there is quite a bit of clearing. Basically, there's the southbound, the fence, and then the railroad tracks.
You were wondering where we were gonna go under 127?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, you know what our shop is at?
Yeah.
If you continue to go south, I don't know how many feet it is right off the top of my head, but that's where we'll be going under, and then if you, and I don't, you had to kind of visualize where the back of our property is at Isabella. Our well is, is in the back of that property. So when we did that well originally, we left a connection for this line, because this has been in our plan for some time. And so it basically is south of the shop and at the back of the Isabella property, I don't know how many feet that is, but we have gone through all of this with MDOT, um, both the local TSC, we've met with them and they've approved the pipe that we're putting in, the location, we met out on site with them. And then also the, like the directional drills and anywhere that we're going to be crossing the railroad, which is only one crossing, that's all been approved by MDOT as well. That's actually done out of Lansing. Because of the size.
Thank you, Kim. Sorry. So the crossing to the plant, it's, it's where the creek, creek is. Have you guys ever walked there? There's a big culvert and the creek crossing that goes, I guess, um, would be the best, uh, above ground visualization. I mean, otherwise, I mean, it's a pretty blank slate. That's the fortunate part about 127, is we have no utilities really to conflict with us, except for the drain and the culvert. And it's about 200 feet for that crossing respectively. And then the other one, um, the railroad crossing is about another hundred feet, and we're gonna do that bore and jack, so, yeah.
How long are they anticipating, um, so the the railroad, railroad one, you said is directional drilling?
Bore and jacks.
Bore and jack. They won't let you directional drill under the railroad tracks.
Which means, what does bore and jack?
We put a big, a steel casing, so this pipe's a 12 inch, so we'll put a 24 inch casing, and then you guys have them in other locations here. That used to be the old way to install water main, where you'd literally hammer, you know, that pipe or the casing, and then you'd fish the pipe through, so.
Uh, directional drills are more commonly used today, and we would prefer that, but they don't like the, um, the slurry that you get from the directional drill.
It might-
It might collapse.
The base, the base for the-
Directional drill's a lot cheaper.
So when we go under 127, then that, is there an estimate on how long the closure that is? Or is it, is it just like a lame closure?
We won't have a closure.
At all?
Yeah.
No.
Oh.
Because it's open on the, um, west side of 127 and they're gonna be far enough off the road that we don't believe we're even gonna have to close down 127. That's one of the things we talked to MDOT about, t, the local TSC, who are really great to work with on these projects. Where should we put that, so that we're where we need to be, we don't have to have a road closure? We can, they didn't say we couldn't, but, and where their future needs are accommodated as well, if it ever was expanded. So we picked a, we picked a spot for that and with, you know, you never can foresee the, all of the future, but we we tried to pick a really good spot for that. And then on the other side, once the, the bore and jack is, or the, um, directional drill's done under the freeway, we'll be in the, um, medi, or the shoulder as well, so we won't have to close traffic on either side.
Well, thanks. Any other questions or comments?
I'm all set.
We have a motion on the floor. Anybody not clear on the motion? This is to approve the entire amount, um, to McGurk Sand and Gravel, correct?
Roll call.
Correct. We all good? Do you do a roll call of, of this motion? Clerk?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all the work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, she's, she's worked a lot on this as well.
Uh, that moves us on to, uh, item B on the agenda. Individual performance review with township manager. Everybody got the right, uh, evaluation form this time? We're all here, which is really nice. And so, just based on our previous conversations, unless there is objection, we're gonna follow the path we've done the last couple of years, which is to kind of go through it together, uh, share our thoughts where you feel necessary. And then we'll collate the results and then give that as our presentation of one voice to our manager for his performance review. Agreed? Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll just walk us through top to bottom, I guess, so. You looking yours up?
Yes.
Okay. Do you need a minute?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Beginning on Global Ends, item 1.1, Residents Engage in Vibrant Community Life.
Three point five.
Three.
Three?
I was gonna say, if you can come back for a minute.
Four.
Three.
Three.
Anyone wanna comment on this one?
Are you writing it down, or you want me to?
It'd be great if you would. Yeah, if you're willing. I was writing it down, but that allowed me to focus better on running the meeting. Any comments?
This actually, the score went up for me this year, and I'll tell you, just because of different things we've done, parks and, and equipment we've put in, trails, walkways, improvement, I looked at, I think it was three point five last year, that's why, that's why I did four. I mean, that's my comment, and that's why I'm at four. I do think it's an excellent community for raising families, and, yeah, that's why I give it a four.
I like your comment, sidewalks, I mean, we've done a lot of sidewalks this past year, and with the.
This year or last year?
Last year.
Yeah.
Just last year. Yeah. Any other comments?
Three.
Did you get, did you get all those? I mean, repeat them to you?
Sorry, my computer decided it wasn't gonna start today, so I'm trying to bring it up on my phone.
That's nice. What a good computer.
Item 1.2, All Residents Can Thrive, by the way, for anybody that happens to be watching, our policy governance lists out our ends, and you can think of those as goals, although they're different from goals, but lists out ends that we have as a township, which is our vision for where we wanna be. And then the second half of this evaluation is on the performance and limitations that we put on our manager. And so what we're going through right now is, is the ends. So as I'm reading these, you're hearing the ends directly from our policy governance, the policy that this board has set. So with that, 1.2, All Residents Can Thrive and Achieve More Than Their Basic Needs. We'll start this way this time. Trustee Brown?
Three point five.
Three.
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 Four.
Three.
Any comments on this one?
All is a pretty big umbrella. That's all I have to say.
You got that right.
And just to know, we kind of struggle with this section each year, because it's the ends which also is evaluating us in some ways, right?
Absolutely.
All residents may enjoy a safe and healthy environment and resources that are essential for their well-being and quality of life. Trustee Derring?
Four.
Four.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Three.
Three point five. I didn't realize that was an option. Trustee Derring, Trustee Derring started it, yeah.
And I did it last year, and I got yelled at.
Oh, did you?
We're gonna have three point two seven side pocket. Any comments on that one?
This is the area where I thought I'd put more of the sidewalk, the sidewalks and stuff, like, I grouped it more into this category than the other. That's why I gave it a four.
Everything happens so slowly, but over the course of the last four years, you know, we can start to see, you know, things coming, coming to life, so.
That's why I love being here with y'all, is the decisions we make, you can see it, not virtually overnight, but virtually overnight. It's, it's cool to see.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, well, it says may enjoy, so, I mean, I give it a four, because all of them can enjoy, you know, and it's exceeding, because they can do more than, you know, what they actually think they can, right? There's a lot out there.
1.4, Residents Can Enjoy the Natural Resources and Green Space of the Township.
I put five on that one.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Three. Clerk?
Four.
Four.
Okay, I screwed it up.
Have you been to our parks? Have you been to our parks? That's my comment.
Yeah, baseball fields.
Everything, just, yeah.
The workout facility.
You can walk to every one of them, jump on a bike.
Okay, I need everybody to repeat that, because I missed one. I screwed it up completely.
Personally, I.
I'm sorry. Are you gonna repeat it?
Trustee Bills?
I, I think that, you know, our parks are geared towards kids. They're not necessarily geared towards the entire populace. I don't happen to have children, so for me, the Mount Pleasant City Parks are much better for me. So that's the reason, I don't, I don't think it's for everybody, I think it's for kids, these parks that we have, and they're, they're nice parks, I'm not saying they're not, but they are not for everybody.
I think you're right, and when we were looking at park funds and what, how to expend them, we asked in our survey about what people wanted to see, and I was surprised by some of those answers, that people didn't necessarily hi, put as a high priority.
Well, you know, we're, we're so covered in this area by beautiful parks.
We are.
And so I'm really glad we have the ballfields, I think it's really important that we do, and I'm not saying that it's a bad thing. I'm just saying that it's not for everybody, our particular parks.
And we, we hate to flood the market, so to speak, with the same thing that's being provided by our neighbor right next door.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna put a five when it says all.
Right, gotcha.
And that was my reasoning for a four as well, was because there are.
A four.
Three.
Some populations that we don't have for our parks, so.
So for our clerk, do you get this down? Can we repeat?
Four. I got it. Numbers?
You got them all now?
I got it now.
And, and you're gonna hand in your sheets to me anyways, right?
You got a dollar? Just kidding.
I, I do, and I used.
My brother used to say it all the time, I'm sorry, I had to do it.
I'm sorry, that was 1.4, correct?
Yes.
So on, we good to go to 1.5 then? Clerk, you, you good?
Yeah, I'm just gonna write the names in order, so it's easier, and then I can either go up or down, right?
Okay. New and innovative commercial establishments and advanced manufacturing, distribution, engineering, and research facilities are drawn to Union Township through commerce-friendly economic development policies consistent with MEDC Redevelopment Ready Communities Program Best Practices. I think I'm coming here this time.
So I think I was, I'm saying, I guess, a three, I guess we'll discuss it later. Three.
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 1.5.
Three.
I mean, this is, there's a, there was a ton of work that was put into this, and it was very well done. I just don't know that we've seen the, it's just new, it's also new, so I don't know what, where this is gonna take us.
You're talking about the redevelopment?
Right, just getting to this point to be certified with the six best practices, and you could see, like, some of the, some of the, like, one of the best practices is development review, which is what we're, one of the things we're working on right now, that we talked about. Maybe we can streamline some of the final site plan, you know, where it doesn't necessarily, it might save a developer a few weeks, I mean, that's, it's all part, it's all, in my opinion, it's, nothing happens fast, it happens at the right pace. But when it happens, look out. So we're, I think we're on the right path, so I, you know, I'd sure like to give it more, but I mean, I, I don't know that we're there yet. I think three, what they call a three is meets expectations, so I think at this point in time, because we're just getting started, and I believe we got a grant for that, to, to do this project, we're just getting started, so I think it meets expectations, because I can see some of the steps that we're taking to really be ready to go.
I just had, I gave it a three last year, I believe I gave it a two. Part of the increase is the fact that we are going through the MEDC Redevelopment Ready Communities Best Practices, so that kind of bumped it up. And I know Mark has taken some effort to reach out to the business community in the past year, and I know we still hear grumblings and stuff like that, but I, in the absence of anybody directly talking to me, I'm assuming things are getting a little better, but until somebody tells me specifically what's going on, I gotta go with what I know as facts. One issue that I do have with the wording on this is the, last year, the former wording was, "Commercial Establishments Including New Innovative and Traditional Are Drawn to Union Township," and this is "New and Innovative Commercial Establishments and Advanced Manufacturing, Distribution, Engineering, and Research Facilities." I think you're leaving out a whole cluster of traditional businesses that we would like to attract, and so I guess that'd be something maybe we wanna discuss when we're going over ends, at a different time, and not necessarily tonight. Just, I just thought the writing was.
Yeah, I think leaving innovative out would be a good idea, because we don't have to have innovative, just new commercial establishments, is really what we really need.
Or just put "and" "traditional" back into it, you know, just like you're going in, just adding that word back into it, I thought would be a little bit more, because you're kind of leaving out a huge percentage of businesses in the area. So that's just my two cents, and we can go over it more formally at another meeting.
Yeah, I think those are good thoughts.
I just don't think we've seen enough economic development that, that includes the establishment and new business at all. We haven't seen a lot of that at all in our township. So, something's wrong there, that's all I'm saying.
Do you know, do you have a feeling for a number of site plans you've had this year?
It just seems like it's a little bit lighter than what we normally have, because we seem to be spending a lot more time on working through ordinances, having more time for that, which is extremely important, which I think is all part of the, you know, ready development, so. I don't know what it would be compared to the city, or I know there's other areas close by that maybe are a little bit busier, but I don't, overall, I don't, I'd be, I'd be interested to know what, maybe like the city of Mount Pleasant is experiencing, are they experiencing kind of the same thing? We have things going on, it's not that we don't.
Yeah, but at what level, right, is it, is it trending down or trending up, or is it flatlining, or?
Is it the economy, is it interest rates, is it just there's the, you know, the decrease of CMU population, I mean, you don't know, but it's like, you know, we all hear grumblings, and as a board member, if you feel like you've done the whole chain of command at the township and have talked to everybody, talked to the manager, you're still not feeling your issues are taken care of, then you need to contact us as a board. Because ultimately, we hold the manager responsible, but until people come and talk to us, I'm not gonna base my vote on, or my number on rumors and hearsay. And that's just the way, but yes, there is a slowdown in growth, we all see it, but, you know, the city of Mount Pleasant has how many retail marijuana, like, 12 now? I mean, so that's kind of, you're kind of skewing the number, because there's been a lot of development work, but it's just rehabbing businesses for marijuana shops, you know, so you look at the, the corridor and mission, I think there's a 25% vacancy rate. So it's just, there's a lot of factors going into it. In my opinion, that's, in my opinion.
And I, and I agree, Mr., or Trustee Smith, when you, when you said, you know, if there are people having issues, those specific people need to come forward, if they have to the, to the board, with.
Yep.
With their concerns. We've had what I would consider very good community members who care, who've tried to help, and, but we're not having anybody that's, you know, specifically, this is my issue. So, again, I agree, you know.
Because once you get to the issue, is it an interpretation of the ordinance, or is it the actual ordinance itself? Because it could be our fault as a board by not having the proper ordinances or policies in place, I mean, so we can't automatically assume or point blame on anybody until we know what the problem is, because it may well be us as a board.
Well, I, I've seen, I have seen where, where a local businessman has come in and talked about an ordinance, and brought in the right information, not, didn't have an issue, but wanted to do something that our ordinances wouldn't necessarily allow, and so they came in and spoke to us, and had somebody with knowledge, and they came in and said, "This is why, and this is what we do, and this is, and we as a board, Planning Commission agreed to make the change and recommended to the Board of Trustees." And so it was, it was a good change, it was a good move, and I was, in my time on the Planning Commission, we've really only had one person come forward to say, "Hey, would you consider this? I wanna do this, would you consider this?"
And I think my frustration goes along the lines I'm hearing as well, I think, in that I've heard some of the grumblings, but then when you ask for specifics examples, there isn't any, and then I was given one, in one case, and so I looked into it, and it turns out, it, there was misinformation or false information that was floating about on this, and it wasn't anything to do with the township at all. But maybe, we're, we're getting off a little bit, because we're supposed to evaluate the manager, maybe it's worthy for this board to discuss 1.5 as an agenda item in the future, so that we can get a better handle on, I think the questions that you asked were excellent. Is it, is it just interest rates, is it, I mean, there's probably a lot of factors that are playing into the level of development we see, whether it's up or down or stagnant, right?
I would like to have.
I would like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That might be a good thing to bring up at the joint meeting, too.
Agreed.
But we need hard facts, so that we, as a board, when we have these conversations with people, we can say, "Well, here are some things that we know to be true." Not that what they're saying isn't an issue, but.
That's been our struggle when we've asked in the past.
But also, maybe from the management, have some hard numbers, how many, or Planning Commission, whoever, how many actual site plans have been actually finished this year? How many were finished last year? How many were finished the year before? Were they residential or commercial? How many, what's the split?
Well, that, that comes out at the joint meeting, I believe. We, we, the Planning Commission.
We get numbers on there at the joint meeting?
Yeah.
I don't remember having those numbers.
I don't know if it came out on a piece of paper, or if it was something that was.
I think it was just talked about.
Yeah, I think, I think the chair just.
Well, I'm talking about hard numbers on a paper.
Well, they're.
I can look at and compare it, year to year.
That's fair.
Not one year. Yeah, it's just one year, what they talk about.
Yeah, we just talked about the year in review where we had so many this, and so many that, and so many S U Ps, and.
We talk like future projects, too, right?
What's that?
We give like future projects, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Or, you know, we talk about the ordinances that we've had discussions on, and, but that's fair, that's fair.
How about we put this on a future meeting, and really try to figure out what data we want at that meeting, what we think would be useful? Because I think until we are able to identify what data we need, we're not sure what questions we're gonna wanna ask, right?
I just, I think we need more information.
Right.
That, that way we can have something to discuss, because right now, if someone approaches me, there's a, there's a reasonable amount of information that I just don't know. I don't think anybody knows at this.
Yeah.
At this table.
Could, that'd be a great conversation.
Yeah. Are we, are we good with 1.5? Other comments? You got all the scores, clerk, for that one?
Yeah.
So that finishes our ends, moving to executive limitations, 2.0. Global executive constraint, Township management shall not cause or allow any practice, activity, decision, or organizational circumstance, which is either unlawful and prudent, or in violation of commonly accepted public administrative practice and professional ethics. Trustee Brown?
Four.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Five. Clerk?
Four.
Five.
Fairly high scores, and any comments? I think this is, I put a five, because I think this is one of our strengths. I think there's a lot of best practices from cross-training to an environment that appears to be pretty healthy, at least that's my take from our clerk, and Treasure might know more, you work more inside. But whenever I'm here, the workers, staff seem to have respect for each other, they seem to appreciate the jobs they have and the jobs they do, a lot of education that goes on.
You know, it's been very telling to me, as being a trustee, trustee here for four years now, there's no turnover. Very, very little turnover in employees. For the township, which says a lot on the management side, I believe.
Especially right now with that turnover being so high in so many municipalities and private sector for that.
Absolutely.
And former employees asking, you know, applying for jobs that are available and coming back.
Coming back.
That's, that's awesome.
Good? Two point one, treatment of consumers with respect to interactions with consumers or those applying to be consumers. Township management shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures or decisions that are unsafe, undignified, unclear. Unprofessional, indirect, untimely, inaccurate or unnecessarily intrusive. Trustee Thering?
I'm gonna say three.
Four.
Four.
Three.
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 Four.
Any comments?
I haven't heard any complaints.
Okay, moving on, two point two. With respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, township management may not cause or allow conditions which are unfair, undignified. Disorganized, unclear or violate collective bargaining agreements. Trustee Brown?
Five.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Five.
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 Again, any comments?
I think it goes back to the turnover.
We're strong in that, we're strong in that area. Extremely strong.
Moving on?
Yes.
Two point three, compensation and benefits with respect to employment, compensation and benefits to employees, consultants, contract workers. Volunteers and collective bargaining units, the township management shall not cause or allow jeopardy to fiscal integrity or public. Image. Trustee Brown?
Four.
Three.
Five.
Four.
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 We actually have a contract worker here tonight, should we ask her?
She'll say I'm mean to her.
Aren't they, aren't they referring to others besides my friend Jennifer?
I just wanted to pick on Jennifer.
That's what you get for sticking around.
Uh, any comments on this, other than my off-handed one that I just had?
No. No.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, two point four, financial, uh, planning, budgeting, financial planning, planning for any fiscal year. Or the remaining part of any fiscal year shall not deviate material from board's ends priorities, risk financial jeopardy. Or fail to be derived from a multi-year plan. Think here.
Five.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Four.
Oh, wait, wait, hold on, stop. Start over. I wasn't paying attention, I was reading.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Four.
Four.
Five.
I'll make one comment that was, uh, back, piggybacking on Trustee Smith's comments earlier, um, on the previous item. We're, we're in a position where the township's very financially healthy. And, and that makes this kinda stuff a lot easier to deal with. We don't do a lot of reacting. And shuffling of, of shell, no shell games in township. I mean, we're blessed in many ways to.
Right, and then I think the scores reflect that. I don't think you'd see those scores if we're in a lot different situation. I think this is definitely the strong suit of manager, for sure.
Moving on. Uh, two point five, uh, oop, nope. Two point five, financial conditions and activities, with respect to the actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the township management shall not cause. Or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in ends policies. Trustee Thering?
Five.
Four.
Five.
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 Three.
Five.
Again, comments?
Another strong point.
Uh, two point six, asset protection. Township management shall not allow to corporate, allow corporate assets to be unprotected, inadequately maintained. Or unnecessarily risked. Trustee Brown?
Can I do five point five?
No.
I think everybody knows, uh, I feel about the facilities in Union Township, five point five, I'm sorry, five.
You're trying to average my score up, right?
Three.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Four.
Five.
Again, any other comments besides, uh, Trustee Brown?
Just take a tour, right? Just take a tour.
That's right. Although I haven't been on an official tour since twenty.
It's been a while.
Right, or twenty-one, twenty-one, maybe.
Twenty, twenty.
It's been a while. Wasn't it twenty, twenty?
Great idea.
And I think right after, I guess I'll came out.
First year.
Been a while. Have been into some facilities since not being on a tour, but.
We had it toured, yeah, on the bus. No, I meant on the one thing.
It's not ours, though.
The sheriff's? Yeah. We went toward the jail.
He said any tours.
I highly recommend if, before they open, get to see the inside of that place. You don't wanna see it after, because that means.
I don't ever wanna see it after, no. It's really nice and, I mean, it makes a lot more sense, like where all the money, like, why it costs so much. When you see it, if you actually did see it, I'm the, you know, the building part of it.
I don't, I don't know, I think I was at a something, I couldn't go, I was either at work or something, I couldn't get out.
I had therapies, so.
Uh, moving on then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, two point seven, ends focus of grants and contracts, the township management may not enter into any grants and contract arrangements. That fail to emphasize primarily the production of ends and secondarily the avoidance of a sec- unacceptable means. I lost, who went first? Four, okay.
Three.
Four.
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 I should ask Trustee Bill, since you were the exception on that one, if you have any comments? I'm just picking on ya, you don't have to.
I really like the job that manager stool dryer does here. I think he does a great job. He meets my expectations. That's a three.
Moving to, anybody else? Sorry, I meant to pick on ya, you know that.
It's okay, I don't mind being picked on. I get it all the time.
Uh, two point nine, collaboration with other entities in order to maximize achievement.
Two, two point eight.
Last one.
Did I?
Yep.
My apologies, two point eight, thank you. Uh, two point eight, emergency township manager's success, succession. In order to protect the board from sudden loss of township manager services, the township manager shall not operate without a written plan identifying no fewer. Than two other named executives familiar with board and township manager issues and processes. Uh, Trustee Thering?
Five.
Four.
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 Three.
Four.
I didn't wanna give a five for this, even though I think.
Should be, because he's always covered. I mean, I, I felt the same way, that's, I give four, but.
But I, I mean, I could definitely take the approach that it certainly meets my expectations, um, which would be the three, so I appreciate Trustee Bill's perception of that. But yeah, township's a much more stable place today than it was. Um, a few years ago when we didn't have that type of ability to back up the manager, so thanks for sitting here, by the way.
I think he really works on cross-training, his job with, with you guys and it teaches you to sit in that seat when he's gone and do a very good job. As you have tonight, and I think that's in, in the cross-training. Uh, again?
There was a time when Mark was out of, probably snowmobiling, I don't think he was, he was gone anyways. And Director Smith was, uh, what do you call it, um?
Acting.
Acting manager, thank you. And, um, there were some issues that came up with the county that required some immediate attention. Uh, and Director Smith and I ended up having quite a few conversations in a very short period of time. Um, and I was really grateful that she was there to help me navigate and, uh, I hope I would help you navigate what we were dealing with. Perfect. We good?
Good.
So now, now I can go to two point nine?
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is collaboration with other entities. In order to maximize achievement of ends, the township manager shall not fail to explore strategic partnerships. And intergovernmental cooperation and to optimize collaboration with other entities in the region where appropriate. Trustee Brown?
Four.
He really exceeds at this, three.
Four.
Three.
Three.
I gave him a five.
Four.
You wanna know why I gave him a five?
Sure, I do.
Well, cause he's working and, like, we're teaming up with the city for this, the tribe for this, the city with, I mean, like, we're doing a lot of. Joint projects and things like this, unless I'm reading this wrong, this is what I'm seeing from it, like, inter.
Governmental.
Yeah, like, we're doing a lot of things that we didn't used to do in the future, or in the past, we're doing future stuff together as a team. Tomships, I'm sorry, I think that's a five, cause he's working extra to do that, and I've seen it, so.
I, I gave the.
But that's my opinion.
No, and I, I agree with you a hundred percent, um, but yet I gave a three and I think maybe this, because this one's so important to me. That we have these positive, healthy relationships with.
Yeah. Yeah, well, see, and that's why I gave it a five, because in the past, it wasn't, and it just keeps getting better, so it's.
Right.
Exceeding my expectations, so, I mean, it's excellent. I think he's doing a great job on that.
I, I would agree.
That's my opinion.
It's a good opinion.
And also.
Good opinion.
Right, and also when I attended the intergovernmental, uh, meeting, uh, he was very well received.
Yeah, I think he's respected by. The other groups, at least that's what I hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was definitely a lot of camaraderie there and mutual respect, all the way around.
All good? Uh, two ten, communication and support to the board, township manager shall not permit the board to be uninformed. Or unsupported in its work. Trustee Brown?
Four.
Three.
Four.
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 Five.
Five.
I don't get a, a lot of fives, but these things I feel are important that he, you know, improved on in the past, like from. Like where we started, I mean, even eight years ago, like, or seven or whatever, eight years ago. And it just keeps getting better and better and better and better, so it's just one thing that I see that he went from here to here and I think he's doing great.
I, I would agree with you, I think we, this is one of the spots we, um, dinged a little bit in the past, four was communication aspect. Not that he was failing at it.
No, it's just, you know.
I think you're right, I think.
I'll make a note, though, also, I think in the month of August and early September before this meeting, we get a lot of communication.
Anybody else?
One thing, just I think, you know, it's very hard to put a packet together and try to have all the information. That seven members are gonna vote on, so I do give him a lot of credit and that's why I gave him a four, because trying to predict all the questions. Everything that they have is very difficult and that just comes with time and I think he's getting very good at kind of having all the answers on paper. That we need, and so I think he does a very good job of that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Any surprises from, before we get to the, uh, textual comments? From what you heard?
Like, what kinda surprises? What do you mean?
I don't know, anything you heard from anybody that was a surprise or?
In our scores or comments?
Or comments.
I'm not surprised.
No.
Neither, thought I'd ask.
Kinda runs like last year, I think last year was a very good review and I think this year's another very good review.
So, as we stand right now, collating these numbers, averaging them out like we've done the past, we're good with that? And then with the textual comments, um, we'll make sure that manager sees all of them, right? Okay, uh, so let's start with, uh, what things the manager, what things does the manager do well? Trustee Thering?
Do I have to write all this down?
No.
No.
You're gonna hand me at least copies of your packet, so I can transcribe them.
I put down, um, the manager listens to our concerns and questions and responds. To our answers either at that moment or by the next day, if he's not able to answer at that moment, so. There's not a lot of lapse in time if we have a, a concern at a meeting or just a conversation, not even if it's a concern. It's just something that we're talking about, if he didn't have the answer, he, he makes it a point to, uh, email us the next day, so.
I agree, that's absolutely true. And, and also appreciated. You got more?
I'm good.
Clerk?
Uh, planning, organization, working with the staff and cross-training, that's what I have.
I have manages finances well, inform, informs the board well and timely. I think he's excellent organizational management, um, I wish I had some of those skills. Works well with the management team and myself on both internal and external issues, um, just cause I meet with Mark fairly regularly. I always feel like, um, it's a pleasure to work with and like Trustee Thering just said. I often ask questions that if he doesn't have the answer to, he usually gets it to me within twenty-four hours, most often.
Um, I also have answers questions timely, um, herds the staff well, yes, I put herds the staff well. Finances, organization, things like that, so.
Um, budgets and financial reporting, and I really like the details that he gives on his monthly manager's report. I think that is very descriptive and he broke, breaks it down into different areas, so it clearly shows, um, in writing what. What is going on at the township and his office.
You referring to his report or the activities report?
The activities report that is prepared, yes.
Yeah, and, and just comment on that, every once in a while that is laid in our packet, I realize it's a lot of information to put together, but I really appreciate. That same information when it does come.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Manage the staff and high-level managers well, informs the board.
Excellent communication, works and plays well with team, his staff. He had the great communication with trustees and staff, um, planning, uh, excellent organization. And excellent, excellent at the budgeting factor of his job.
We do have a staff member here who's a director, we could ask her stuff.
She's not a director tonight.
You have both hats on tonight. Uh, are we good?
Yeah.
Uh, what areas could the manager improve on? Trustee Brown?
That's a tough one, that's a, that's a really tough one. I would say less vacations. Just kidding, he probably won't like that if he sees this video. That, that, that's a real tough one, I, I, the only thing I can put there is just keep working on what he's working on, cause you can improve on your communication. You can, and improve on connecting with business owners and, uh, different people in the community. Does he do excellent at that? Yes, but can he improve? Sure, everybody can, right? So, the general improvements are just general, and that's all it is for me, as, as far as an improvement for the manager.
Not much at all, does, does excellent job. Trustee Bills?
And this is more based on the grumblings we've heard this year, but.
And this is more based on the grumblings we've heard this year, but I just put that we should try to have a more streamlined flow for site plans and a speedier process both for business and residential projects. And I don't know if that's through his management of Mr. Nanny or what, but, but what I, what we've heard through the grapevine is that some things are held up or, you know, tweaked and tweaked again and tweaked again, making it slow. So I just think speedier site plan approval somehow making it, you know, easier to get things done. And I also have some comments at the end.
The general ones?
Well, a different kinda comment, yeah, a general.
Okay. So you're good for now, we'll come back to the general.
Uh, just communication with the business community. I know he's been working on it and there's been more meetings, but I'd like to see that improved and kinda what, tail off what Trustee Bill said, you know?
I just said communication, he, he does great, he's doing, you know, a lot better, but you know, it's something that everybody can work on at some point in time in our lives, you know, so.
It's kinda like Trustee Brown said, I think you can always improve, right, in everything you do. Now I'm curious what that wrote. Have to read it first.
Memory for you then, right?
Yeah. Well, it's been a while, it's been since before the last meeting. Okay, customer service in regards to building slash zoning. Encouraging constructive criticism and hearing complaints. The growth of the township and better enforcement creates some of the complaints we hear. This is kinda a side note, I guess, now that I read it. I attribute some of the complaints we hear, I'm gonna put this in Brian's speak now instead of what I wrote. What we hear is a result of the township growing up. Twenty years ago, we were run, the supervisor had a lot of power, things were kinda run through the hip pocket of the elected officials. Now we have professional staff, very qualified professional staff, essentially a CEO. And so when that happens, you know, you, we get better zoning ordinance and that naturally brings in some complaints. We have an SUP process that can be improved, I'm sure can, naturally brings in complaints. So I think a lot of the rumbles that we do hear are a result of just the pains of growth. That doesn't mean we should ignore them either. That's why I attribute, so piggybacking, I guess, on Trustee Bills and Trustee Smith, customer service in regards to building and zoning. Makes sense?
That makes excellent sense.
I don't got anything.
Never came up with anything?
No.
I talked to-
I haven't been in mine for weeks and I can't think of anything.
Trustee Thering?
So I changed the question a little bit cuz I didn't like the way that question was worded.
Whoa.
So I-
Tell me I can do that.
What I'm gonna ask for-
Got these rogue trustees.
Forgiveness rather than permission.
Path points.
It's just easier that way. I put down, my question is, is what areas could the manager continue to improve on? So I just put down that I believe the manager is always looking and listening to find ways to improve the township. I believe that the manager knows where we could use better processes and that it takes time. So that's... Continue on.
To piggyback on that just a little bit, I think our manager is self-aware. Which really helps him in self-evaluation. I think it's gonna be helpful for him to hear things we have to say too, but I think he knows where, when he, if he has a struggle in something that, how to improve that process. I think he's reflecting, which I think is a strength. Does that make sense from what you were saying?
Um, yes, yeah, that's, yeah, I believe the manager knows where we can-
Yeah.
Could use a better process, you know? Not that, I guess that is improving things, but I mean, I, I think we have things in place, it's, now it's time, it doesn't happen overnight. It takes time to get, get us to where we wanna be and I think every day, I mean, starting from day one, I mean, when the, when the doors first open here, you know, it started that day. Now we're to here and I think that with our manager that that's probably a daily thing, that there's always something that's coming up and I'm sure that he looks into it to see if it applies to this township. To help improve our processes or that just the township in general.
We'll let you take, just continue with general comments.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna continue to change that question. To suit, to suit my needs.
Gone rogue.
Yeah, I'm good.
Oh, you're good. General comments though.
Oh, you ready for me?
Yeah.
Oh, well then, okay, I did not change this question.
I thought that's what you were saying.
No, 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 I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought you were, we were talking about question two, so.
Question three.
Um, I put down the, very similar to the, to the question above, I just put, I feel the township is organized and ready to take on any challenge. And that starts with Mark all the way, all the way through.
Clerk Cody?
Uh, manager does a great job, he works well with all the employees and he's always willing to help. I mean, he'll, he helped the girls up front, I don't know how many times, you know, doesn't know all the job, but he'll go up there and sit so they can go do something if they need to do it. I mean, he, he does a great job. This is from me working here and seeing it, you know?
Which is a great segue to mine, mine is culture, culture, culture. Staff is treated with respect and there seems to be a professional constructive atmosphere. And I appreciate your comments because when I write this, I think of it, we purposely try not to meddle in the staff's affairs, we do that through the manager, that's our policy governance. And because of that, I'm not in the weeds, like on a daily or even weekly basis, to truly get a good pulse, but I don't have any red flags. It seems like if there was a bad culture, that there would be more red flags that were apparent, such as turnover, Trustee Brown mentioned. So I wanted to lift up, there's, there appears to be a very healthy cul- culture here.
I put, you know, I'm, I'm thankful for, for what he does and the atmosphere. It's, you know, with the staff and everything, it is a very fa- say family atmosphere, you know, they're constantly joking with each other and having fun in here every time I'm in here. And so it's, it's nice to see that among staff, that, you know, they're comfortable enough with each other to joke and laugh and have fun, so.
I just simply put, I think Mark's doing a great job, just leaving it at that, very simple.
I think he does a great job in general, and then I just, I, whenever it's okay for me to make not related to the review comments. Is that now?
Um, if it's not related, how about final board member comment?
Well, it's kinda related to the review though, but not his particular review.
Okay.
So recently, on September sixth, they, in the MTA email thingy we get, you know? There, did anybody see it? Okay, um, they, this other township is going through the process, so I wrote back and described our process. And it was interesting, the response I got back from this lady, and she said that they are working on something similar, including a lottery selection of union employees and boards and commission members to participate in three sixty reviews of the manager each year. So wouldn't that be nice to get input because we know from anecdotal evidence that the people at this building are treated well. We don't know much about the other employees. I mean, I don't, does anybody here see them on it, except you?
I do.
You see them on a daily basis?
Not on a daily, but like, um-
We have forty-some employees, don't we?
They all, well, they stop in, so I talked to most of them, they helped me with the election setup, tear down, so I know, like, most of them. But I mean, there's some that I don't know, but I, I mean, some I know and they've-
Anyway, I think this is a reasonable thing to think about, it, it's not bad, just to have a lottery selection of a couple of people from each department to give us a basic input on the staff section. They don't have to give us input on anything else but management of staff and I just think that, there's nothing wrong with that, I think it's actually a very good idea. Because it'd be anonymous, you know?
It, it would be anonymous.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, if it was anonymous, that would be fine, the, the problem is, is you could open, you know, they, they may not give a true input of what they feel for fear of backlash.
Yeah.
Is my only fear. Right, but I didn't hear the anonymous until just now, so I was like, that would be my concern.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be my concern too, is that if you got a specific beef and you put it down on paper, you're not anonymous anymore because everybody knows that you're the only one involved in it, so it kinda like, are you really getting accurate if people aren't gonna say anything negative? So that's where I'd be kinda like, in theory, I think it's a good idea, I just don't know how you could really keep it truly anonymous.
We could keep it in the numbers, you know, but I'm just saying, you have the numbers, how do you rate the manager on this particular way, whatever? You know, I, look, I'm just relaying this, I thought it was really good.
No, 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 it's kinda cool, yeah.
I mean, somebody from each board, each commission, cuz, you know, management staff sits on these commissions, right, right, Rodney Nanny, right? Mark goes to some, some things, I don't know, all right, that's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Would it be a different, would it be a little bit of a different survey?
Well, yeah, I was gonna say-
It'd be a specific survey.
Okay, so maybe you could ask the chairs of each board to? I don't know, I'm just, I don't think it's a bad idea, I'm just trying to think of how, I think it's worthy of just thinking about it.
My main thing was, be, have an input from some random union sector. That's all, and I think, you know, there's nothing wrong with getting input from actual employees besides elected officials, you know?
Good though.
I've, uh, my turn?
Yep.
I'm last. All the way around, heard Mark works well, very well with people. He, he's an excellent guy and a, and a couple of people say I'm gonna keep it simple, I'm gonna keep it very simple too cuz Mark does an excellent job. Thank you, and I, I more wrote the general comments, speaking to the public. Thank you, Mark, you do an excellent job, keep up the good work. Three simple bullet points.
Giddy up.
Very simple, he does an excellent job, thank you, that's it.
Giddy up.
Uh, that wasn't my, giddy up wasn't my comment, that's-
I know, I know, I'm just laughing at Bill.
It's, it's this side of the table, four years, that has gotten us in trouble and now she's trying to leave us, you know?
So, be, be, before we leave our last business item, any last comments on the process or thoughts, last minute thoughts? You understand what I'm gonna do, right? So moving on, that takes us, excuse me, to item twelve on the agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record and with that, we open extended public comment at eight twenty PM. Let it note, we noted that nobody is connected remotely, we do have someone in the peanut gallery.
Kim knows that, I like to talk. No, a couple of things, I, I actually wanted to stay cuz one of my other clients that I've worked with, actually as long as you guys, Charter Township of Garfield, and I believe they had reached out to your manager, they're in the process of going through this, of actually hiring a township manager and their supervisor acting in the capacity as yourself, so. No, so this was very interesting for me to observe and see who they end up getting. But otherwise, related to the contract and the project itself, I, I just, I appreciate you guys understanding our situation. I definitely truly appreciate Kim and staff because you guys put a lot of work into this and it, it is, it's always tough doing cost estimates and, and then, you know, being super excited when we receive the grants and then receiving those respective prices and unfortunately, it is just our economic situation we have. The other thing we also saw too, and Kim had made me aware of, is there was, I think, three if not four utility projects that were going out for bid at the same time, and actually just before ours, so I had actually spoken to specifically one contractor, they intended to bid and they didn't just to, due to timing constraints and other projects they were bidding on, so that's, you know, coupled with pricing and labor, we also had that struggle as well. So anyway, I, I just wanna reiterate that I appreciate you guys understanding our situation and just entrusting us to know that we, our goal is to work within our budget constraints and still provide a great project for you guys, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at nine twenty-two PM, which takes us-
Nine twenty-two?
What did I say?
You said nine twenty-two, it's eight twenty-two.
Eight twenty-two PM, thank you.
Yep.
With that, that takes us to item thirteen, manager's comments, acting manager Smith?
Um, just in case you get any questions, we're cleaning two of our water towers and one of our ground storage tanks, that's what the, what the equipment is out there, just in case you get any questions, and we have the well production that you approved two or three week, or two or three meetings ago, that's begun, so we're moving forward on that.
I got a picture of the one climbing down the side of the tank on a rope and stuff, so I got a picture of it from my house and I kinda blew it up, it just like, could pay me enough to get me on my own. I give them all the credit in the world, they're just on a rope and they're spraying stuff down, that was a, that was a heck of a shot.
I don't know.
Nope.
It'd be tough, but you might be able to pay me enough. Just might be able to do that, number would be huge and that might be my last job.
Well, I didn't notice the equipment, but I'm glad to hear it because last couple of months, I keep thinking it's time to clean that again.
I was gonna ask too, about it, the cleaning of it.
Now we know.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, it was in dire need.
This, this one in particular gets pretty bad. You know, you'll see it'll come, the stuff on the bottom will come back pretty quickly, but yeah, you gotta try to keep it off just so the paint stands up too.
It's like every couple of years, isn't it?
Yeah, we, we kinda rotate them every three to five years, is when we-
I thought it was every couple of years, I was trying to remember, I'm like, I don't-
What's roughly, what's the cost of doing something like that?
Um, they went up this year, I'm trying to remember what it was, it's like fifteen grand to do the three of them.
No, you'd have to pay me way more than that.
That's not enough, that is not enough.
No, no.
It used to be much less expensive, we were a little surprised when we, when we got bits for it. Everything surprises me these days when you get those type of things, I'm like, my gosh.
I'm, I'm with Trustee Smith on this one, not for that. Uh, any questions for acting manager?
No.
Uh, that brings us to final board member comment, Trustee Thering?
I am good, thank you.
Ready for elections? What, what are you about?
I am good.
About two to three weeks away from?
How many, uh, yeah, are we getting our AV ballots out in a few weeks or what?
No.
I don't wanna say anything.
Okay.
How many people are on our AV?
Well, I, but from the state perspective, that's when it can begin and I understand-
So we had the, you know, Kennedy being pulled off the ballot kinda thing, having to go to the thing, and then like, so we had to deal with that, so the ballots aren't even printed yet.
Yeah.
Well, didn't he just appeal to federal court today?
So I mean, like-
He did, he went to state supreme court last and now he's going to the, see if the federal courts will hear unconstitutional, it's freedom of speech issues. Think of the western district.
I have a question for the clerk.
Yeah.
You know, the permanent AV list, how many people are on that now?
About eight hundred.
Is that all?
Yeah, so I send out letters with the apps this time that says, please check it, everyone else, cuz we're not doing the AVs after this year, like the app, or the absentee applications, we're not gonna have a permanent list for it, it's gone after this year.
Oh.
So we ask everybody to check the little box and this time we put in some, I think we've made green, like so it stands right out.
That's good.
No, it's in there, I'm trying to look at my calendar, I'm sorry.
Can you clarify what, what's gone after this year, the, the applications?
Permanent application list, so we will send out the applications, that list is normally in the QBF, or you know, qualified voter, normally we have a list that pops up, it's gonna be gone because now we're gonna have the- It's gonna be gone, because now we're gonna have the permanent ballot list, and it's not big enough to have both. You know what I mean? Like, the system? So, instead, you fill out your application, you get a ballot every, for the next six years. So, if you fill out one app, you'll get the ballot. If you don't want to do the ballot, you want to come in?
You don't get the application each time, essentially, right?
No, you're gonna get it pretty much every six years.
Yeah.
So, but, um, the federal oversees, those will go out, or the military, they might go out the 21st. That's the deadline for that. Normally, we get the ballots the week before that, but that's not gonna happen. We'll probably have it the following week, so they'll start going out last week in September, first week in October. So, they're, we're just waiting. Nothing we can do. It's all in the state right now.
I would just like to thank, after being a firefighter for 30 years, and I'd just like to thank every firefighter, every first responder on this day, and every police officer. 9/11, we will not forget. We will not forget. And, man, I hug every one of them. I love our first responders and firefighters out there, and police officers, Sheriff Maine, all of them, what they do every day, so. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'll echo that, but it was devastating time, 9/11, and also, it's, on another note, on a better note than that, I'm gonna say, I'm really happy for the warm weather we're getting this weekend, and I hope everybody has a good weekend.
I just second what Trustee Brown said.
Same, and then I'm gonna turn around and say, taxes are coming due on the 16th, so be sure to drop them in the drop box, or do them online. Yeah, but thank you for, um, our firefighters, our police officers. Thank you for the families.
Thanks for the comments on that. Yeah, tough day. I only have one thing. September 28th is cleanup day for the township.
Oh, that's right.
Saturday, so it's not, was that?
Two weeks?
Three weekends, three weekends away. So, I'm asking for anybody that is available that Saturday to participate.
If my knee gets better, I will.
I'm sorry?
If my knee gets better, I will.
And if you think you can, would you get with Tara, 'cause I think she's trying to organize the workers to be present there, to make sure that we're staffed fully for the residents for drop-off? At this point, I'm planning on being there. My father-in-law's birthday, we're celebrating, and so it's possible I'm gonna be gone, but planning on being there.
Okay.
And with that, any motions?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support?
Motion by Rice, support by Smith. Any objections? All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We adjourned at 8:30 PM.
Why don't we sign the motion?